Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. And Ms. Raymond, if you would make note that all board members are present. Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Stephen Hall will introduce students from Sunshine Elementary to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are joined by several students who have been participating in Explore classes at Sunshine Elementary School. Students, as I call your name, please come forward. Ivan Chung, Elijah Palagi, Journey Caldwell, Adrick Jackson, and Eileen Earnhardt. You can stand right here if you'd like. And feel free, students, if you want to face our Board of Education. I'm going to brag on you just a little bit. I've got some great things that your principal says about you. During the regular school year, all of these students attend Twain Elementary School, but they're participating in Explore at Sunshine, and they're joined tonight by their principal, Dr. Blaine Broderick. During -- Ivan is a second grader. Ivan, can you raise your hand? Ivan is a second grader who has had perfect attendance throughout his first two years at Twain.[76.22][76.22](APPLAUSE). And he ended the school year receiving the Music Award, the Art Award, and Principal Award for Mrs. Johnson's class. Elijah, would you raise your hand? Elijah is also a second grader who had perfect attendance the past year and a half.[93.54][93.54](APPLAUSE). Elijah received the Music Award and the Citizenship Award for Mrs. Butler's class this year. Journey is a fourth grader. Journey, would you raise your hand? Journey received the Strive for '95 Attendance Award, the Music Award, and the Citizenship Award for Ms. Vasquez's third grade class.[115.75][115.75](APPLAUSE). Adrick, would you raise your hand? Adrick is a fifth grader and last year received the Strive for '95 Attendance Award and met all quarterly PBIS goals based on great attendance, behavior, and perfect work completion.[132.94][132.94](APPLAUSE). Eileen, would you raise your hand? Eileen is a second grader and is Adrick's sister, and she finished her first grade school year with above 96 percent attendance. She met all quarterly goals based on great attendance, behavior, and perfect work completion. We are honored to have these students with us tonight.[155.22][155.22](APPLAUSE). And we're also pleased to be joined by their principal, who has a new title in front of his name. Congratulations, Dr. Broderick.[165.87][165.87](APPLAUSE). Please stand and wave if you're here to support these students tonight. And at this time, we invite you all to stand and join our Twain students as they lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Students, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unrivaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take a photo real quick. Adrick? Eileen? Journey? Shake winners. I'm going to explain what Amazing Shake is if you haven't heard yet. It is our pleasure to introduce five students from Cowden Elementary School who are the top five winners of the annual Amazing Shake competition. Students, please come forward as I say your name. Harmony McCormick, Braylon Henderson, Michael Lawrence, Aria Lee, and Izzy Nevels. Would you all please come forward?[308.02][308.02](APPLAUSE). We also have joining us tonight several members of the Cowden team, including Dr. Sherri Norman and others. Thank you for being here to support these exceptional students. This contest was originally created by the Ron Clark Academy. And if you're familiar with Cowden, you're familiar with the Ron Clark Academy model that's working exceptionally well at that school. So this contest emphasizes the importance of manners, discipline, respect, and professional conduct. In preparing for the competition, these students learn how to give a proper handshake, provide high-quality answers during interviews, and they remain composed under pressure. And they are composed under pressure. I've seen this in action. If you've not witnessed this contest, let me tell you, it is unbelievable. About 50 students face a series of tests and challenges moderated by professionals from local businesses in our community. During an event called "The Gauntlet," students rotate through six stations where they demonstrate a variety of their skills. The top 10 scoring students then advance to a "Think on Your Feet" round, where they are given a surprise topic to speak about in front of a live audience. The five students who are with us tonight proved that they are worthy of these formidable challenges. Please join us and congratulate them. I think one of the students may be joining me to be Chief Communications Officer for the day in the fall, so we're going to make that happen. More info to come. So this evening, we'll continue. We have a unique recognition celebrating Springfield Public Schools and our district's ongoing efforts to become more energy efficient, which has resulted in significant savings for our district. Nine years ago, SPS entered into a partnership with Synergistic to improve energy conservation efforts district-wide. The success of these efforts has resulted in SPS receiving a Best-in-Class Award. To present the award, I would like to introduce Jesse Coulter from Synergistic, SPS Facilities Director, Carsten Cargill, and members of the SPS Energy Specialist Team. Would you please come forward? And I'm going to let Jesse Coulter explain a little bit more about the significance of this award, and then they have a special presentation. We'll take a photo of that, and then we'd like to take a photo with Dr. Lathan and the board. So there'll be several photos after the presentation.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to recognize the energy program and the partnership we have with you. And so a few things about these awards. First, we have the Best-in-Class Obelis that we want to give to Mr. Cargill for him and his team at the facilities for their supporting their hard work in supporting the energy program. And then, second, we want to give this award to the board and to Superintendent, and that's for supporting the energy program as well. And then, of course, we have a giant check for the foundation, and we'll also be giving $4,000 for them to use in their scholarships. Awesome. And that's all I have. Just want to thank you again for this opportunity to show off the energy program.
to make these savings possible. We thank our entire team. As we conclude honoring excellence this evening, we want to recognize our SPS ambassadors. And I wanted to speak for a moment about the importance of this program and how much this program continues to expand. If you recall, we began SPS ambassadors about three years ago. It was a pilot program for half of the year. It went over very well. We expanded it to a full year for community members. It included parents, business leaders, others in the community. We received a great response to that, and we've received feedback from our staff that our staff wanted to have a version for them as well. We expanded the program. We've now had a couple of cohorts of SPS staff members that have participated, and so we continue to see this carry on. So earlier this year, a group of Springfield parents and community members made a commitment to serve as SPS ambassadors. This is the fourth group of individuals to participate in this program. It is a collaborative effort with the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools. We want to thank them. It would not be possible without their support. We work together to engage people who believe in public education and who support our district. They have the opportunity through this program to learn more about our school district. They meet with key leaders, and they participate in several tours of our schools and programs. It's really modeled after the Leadership Springfield experience, where they get a behind-the-scenes look of all the things that SPS has to offer. Last night, these ambassadors met for their final program and their final tour of the year. We started at the Ag Academy, where we received an overview of all SPS Choice programs and magnet schools. We had a tour of that facility, and then we proceeded over to the airport, where we had a presentation about all of CTE programming, college and career readiness programming for our district. They also toured the Premier Flight Center. They saw the planes that our students get to fly up close and personal. We had a really fun photo op. And then we concluded the evening back at the Ag Academy, where we talked about how this program is just the beginning. Now that this experience has concluded, we're going to look for ongoing ways to engage these ambassadors in the work of our district and in helping us tell the story. So more to come on how they will remain engaged. But at this time, we want to invite Natalie Murdock, Lori Finke, and Jessica Blake from SPS to come forward, and they are going to introduce each of the ambassadors who completed this latest experience.
Come on down.[830.12][830.12](LAUGHTER). Just like a game show.
Just like graduation.[834.44][834.44](LAUGHTER). Emily Brinkley. Amethyst DeTiri. Amanda Dunlap. David Edson. Ben Fisher. Jack Gilbert. Brooke Gober. Shannon Gregg. Betsy Hagerman. Lisa Harley Lerton. Bethany Lemon. Michelle Reinmiller. Dr. Sanjay Tawari. Lindsay Tobin. Marissa Weaver.
Great. Thank you all very much. And that concludes honoring excellence for this evening. Thank you, board members.
Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Our recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented, with the exception of Board Policies DFA and DFA-2, which have been pulled for a separate vote per the request from Board Member Mahad McConney. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Board Member Provance.
Second.
Second by Board Member Huff. Yeah, mine dead. And with that, we have a 7-0 vote. This evening, there are no public comments. So now we'll go to Item 4.0, the Consent Agenda Items, Items 4.01 to 4.09. These items were presented at the June 10, 2025 study session for review, and board members were given an opportunity to ask questions at that time, as well as additional information and questions answered by email. Our recommended action is that the board approve Consent Agenda Items 4.01 to 4.09. Do I have a motion? Board Member Thomas Tate? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Board Member Kincaid? And with that, we -- the motion passes with seven votes. Our recommended action is that the board approve Policies DFA and DFA-2 as presented. Do I have a motion? Board Member Smart? Do I have a second? Board Member Mahad McConney? Board Member Mahad McConney, do you have anything you'd like to add or -- okay, please do.
Okay. I wanted to have a conversation or make sure that we understood what's happening here. So DFA-2 was the policy that we followed in terms of our investment procedures. We're completely scrapping DFA-2. So it's completely going away, and it's being replaced with DFA. And as it reads, so it's two short paragraphs. "The Superintendent is authorized to delegate this authority to another administrator with the knowledge." So it's no longer the treasurer. It's the person that is designated, or the superintendent. And then it goes on to say, "She'll follow the procedures established by the board," et cetera, et cetera. And then, "Unless and until the board formally adopts and directs the district to comply with a customized written investment policy upon professional advice from a registered investment advisor," I don't know if we have one, "the board adopts and directs the district to follow the Missouri State Treasurer's model investment policy." So I just want to make sure we all understand that until we adopt our own policy, we have to follow the state's treasurer's model investment policy. And if you go and you look at that model investment policy, it's similar to, but it's not identical to our DFA-2. So it's different. I want to make sure it was on everyone's radar. Are we planning on just doing that? Or are we going to adopt our own? Or do we want to just think about it?
Other comments? Dr. Lathan, did you want to respond?
I mean, I'm okay with this. I mean, I'm okay with this. It's just, it is different than DFA-2, and it doesn't seem like it is.
Right. And you're right, we're removing DFA-2. But just keep in mind, you know, it says Superintendent authorized to his staff. It is the treasurer. It still remains the treasurer.
Oh, is it the treasurer? And that person right now is?
Travis Shaw is our treasurer.
Travis Shaw?
And then Kara is our Executive Director of Business Funds.
Okay. Any further comments?
So it sounds like we're going to default to the state's treasurer's model investment policy until -- Dr. Shaw decides that we need to -- okay. And it also means that it's not going to be looked at annually. This is it. We're just going to stick with this. Got it? Okay.
Other comments? Questions? Let's vote. Wait, it's not going to come up, right? You have to --
Oh, this is roll call.
Oh, thank you. Yep, 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 yep. Thank you. We'll start down here. Board Member Provance?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, 7-0. Item 5.1, Unfinished Business: The 2025-2026 Budget Recommendation. The budget for 2025-26 is next on our agenda. Board members have received multiple presentations on the budget, as well as participated in small group budget meetings and asked questions through email. Our recommended action is that the board approve the 2025-2026 budget as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Board Member Kincaid? Motion, a second?
Second.
Board Member Huff? Let's vote. Do we -- are you going to -- sorry, thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Mahad McConney.
I wanted to take the time to make a couple of comments on the budget issue, and I had asked for it to be separated out. I think it's a really important vote. The work on this budget began two years ago with a systematic and strategic review of expenditures at each site and for each department. It was propelled in part by the disappearing ESTR funds, but largely as a commitment to operational efficiency and responsible spending. This year, the budget development process used a combination of zero-based budgeting and incremental budgeting. Incremental budgeting uses the previous year's actuals and current year's budget as a baseline and then adjusts for the budget projection. While incremental is the most efficient method for budgeting the operating fund and has been our practice, my understanding is that our hope is to use zero-based budgeting soon. And I'm sorry if I'm going into some detail, and I know that the board is very aware of this, but I just want to make sure the public is coming along. This is my fifth year seeing the budget, and I would say that we are implementing practices that will indeed move us closer to and allow for what the private sector would consider zero-based budgeting. For people who don't know what that is, it's a financial strategy where every expense is justified from scratch. So instead of adjusting last year's numbers, each line item begins at zero. And unlike the traditional incremental budgeting, it doesn't assume any cost is essential by default, and every dollar is assigned a purpose. And while there may be some drawbacks, such as inefficiency, I feel that it does promote accountability and uncovers hidden inefficiencies. So I would say that our budgeting process has improved significantly, now marked by both transparency and accountability, and the board has very much been involved in this process. While I've been personally very frustrated with the slow pace of abandoning practices and expenditures that are not effective, the work towards accountability has been steady, and it has been deliberate. In short, I think the progress is substantial, and while I don't agree with everything and, quite frankly, I strongly object to some specific line items, I do support the budget I wanted to make another comment because I've been asked about this. And I want to address this issue because it is of interest to constituents, and I do believe it has tangible impacts on the lives of our students and our families, the morale of our families. I asked the district if the budget has been scrutinized to remove items that would not align with the 2025 state and federal executive orders designed for equal protection of all people, specifically eliminating the use of public funds for diversity, equity, and inclusion-related positions, organizational structures, policies, procedures, practices, activities, training programs, and contracts. I understand that the district understands that all programming and related staffing are aligned with state and federal expectations and legal requirements. Specifically, I understand that the Office of Equity and Diversity has been dismantled. I'm also told that the Department of Access and Opportunity, while operating with essentially the same crew, is engaging in work that lifts the students in Springfield Public Schools. Our programs, except for those that are income-based, are for everyone and open to everyone. I want to take the time to remind students and families that we value and encourage communication, so if you see or if you think practices that you see you feel may be discriminatory, please bring it to our attention. I remain hopeful that the district is not just placating with words, but is serious about ensuring a sense of belonging for all students. I still have 47 seconds left. Thank you.
Of course. Board Member Provance?
I've always heard that Dr. Lathan has said that the budget is the plan. And what she means by that is we have it in the budget to cover a specific cause, and yes, we have a slush fund if an emergency comes up, but it's in the budget for a reason. And I had to do a little fact-checking. One of my -- two of my priorities was to -- One of my, two of my priorities was to make sure that teachers continually are compensated and that we're taking care of the students. And the first year that you were here, Dr. Lathan, the teacher's starting salary was $39,946. Starting teacher for this next school year will be $45,917. That's a 15% increase. And I am always pleased to see all the benefits that are covered. The coaching and the activity stipends have also experienced raises. The after-school tutoring hours that helped students struggling with math and reading is now $30 an hour. I appreciate that teachers can be reassured that their work has been and will continue to be compensated. I really appreciate you supporting the staff on snow days. Not for sure how many businesses might pay you to be off on bad weather. One of the things I hear teachers make sure that needs to be covered in the budget, discipline. I know that you have hired additional classroom coaches, disciplines, specialists. You've added resources to the offices to get the kids to school, get them fed, get them ready for school. It's in the budget. Safest way to get to school is on a yellow school bus. We provide necessary clothes, important school supplies. We have the before and after-school programs that can extend regular hours to accommodate parents' work schedule. The SPS Explore Summer School is a huge help. I cannot thank enough every preschool program that prepares a kindergartner to enter school on grade level so they're not playing catch-up. I am proud that our schools help to help with mental, emotional, physical health issues, vaccines, athletic physicals, dental hygiene, the free and reduced breakfast and lunch programs. There are so many things that our schools cover for students. And sometimes it's just another daily life issue that they cover. Dr. Lathan, you put greater expectations on the teachers. That is the expectation of the community. The community expects that from the superintendent. They want to see those academic standards raised. They want students to demonstrate self-discipline and become the problem solvers of the next genera, of the next generation. The future graduating classes, they must continue to have a meaningful diploma awarded each spring so they can enter the next step in life with the tools, the knowledge, and the experiences of an adult. I support this budget to move forward as presented because it will benefit teachers as well as it benefits the students. I understand this budget is not a cure-all, but it moves us forward. I believe that we will see great improvements in our academic scores from last year that will come forward in the fall. And we're going to pick up right where we left off and see even greater improvements. High expectations, academic rigor, classroom discipline, and a positive outlook. So we can rightfully say their future, our focus for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, yes. Board member Thomas Tate?
Yes, I just wanted to first of all, thank Kara Stasiel and Dr. Lathan and the whole team for the many, many opportunities that you gave us to ask questions and get our answers and to go over budget line items one by one. We have been working on this for a long time and I appreciate the effort and time that you give us to understand and give feedback to the budget process. I'm also grateful for the state transportation allocation so that we can continue to provide transportation to our students with access and opportunities. And I'm also very, very happy that our budget has primarily focused on success-ready students, our governing priority one, and that shows our commitment to academic improvements in our district. So with that, I approve this budget also. I agree, I'm looking forward to approve this budget.
Thank you, board member Thomas Tate. Another comment? Board member Huff?
Just a quick comment, not much to add. Coach Provance did a great job and other board members talking about the access that we have had to ask questions about the budget, to prioritize things as a new board member. That has been so helpful for me. School budgets are complicated. As the largest school district in the state, it's even more complicated. But I also wanted to just say a great thank you to previous boards, Dr. Shaw, Mr. Dilday and his team in stewarding our facilities dollars very, very wisely. It's so exciting that Bingham and Biset are going to be added to the schedule for projects. We're able to pivot on Pershing and give those students a new building. So some really exciting things in facilities as well as academics and supporting our teachers. So I think it's really incredible.
Thank you, board member Huff. Anyone else? Okay, well, let's vote. And now on to new business. Dr. Lathan, do you have any comments?
Yes, compensation plans for 25-26. I want to start by first thanking the board for your support of our compensation plans and for your discussions as we developed our budget. I want to thank our SPS team and also our union leadership for collectively, and that's something, collectively bargaining our compensation plans for 25-26. You know, we are not where we would like to be as a district, but we have made progress as it relates to compensation. Very proud that every year, at least under my leadership and even prior, we have been able to provide colas and also steps for our employees. With that being said, board members, I just want to provide a short overview of what you will be voting on tonight. So based on the collective bargaining agreements, various groups received a range from 1.65% to 5.25%. That was decided by the collective bargaining leaders at that table from the union. Plus some, in some cases, some groups received a step. So they received a cola and also a step. Employees not represented by CPA received a 2% cola plus step. Our teaching compensation has already been said. We'll start next year at $45,917. We know we still need to continue to work on that. We also know we need to continue to work on the operational side as it relates to salary schedule. So it is on our radar and each year, we're going to keep working until we get to a place where we all feel great about where we are. Overall, $9.3 million will be going to salary and compensations for our staff members. So once again, board members, we ask that you approve the 25-26 salary schedule this evening.
Do I have a motion? Board member Mahad McConney made the motion, a second? Board member Thomas Tate? Discussion, questions? Board member Mahad McConney?
I have a clarifying question and then a comment. So my question is, and I just want to make sure. So the document we have, which is the salary schedule, and then we have the schedule changes. I can't tell you how much I appreciate having that because it's so difficult to look at the schedule. So thank you for the schedule changes. And just so that I understand, so this is a combination, it's a result of the district changing classifications, adding, removing, changing to better meet the needs of the district, and it reflects the bargaining, right? It's both of those went into it.
Yes, it's both.
Okay. And thank you for that. And then my comment is, so I'm a fiscal hawk and we, this is something that's very near and dear to Dr. Lathan, that our employees are adequately supported financially. And when you increase people's salary bases, and whether it be cola or by steps, it has a result that is compounding so that in future years, you have to then compound on what you've added. And from a business perspective, you also have the option of giving people bonuses. And Dr. Lathan, I want to thank you for always holding the line and wanting to add to the steps and to the colas, knowing that this means that the commitment is ongoing. I just wanted to mention that, that these are some difficult discussions that we have because, you know, there's limited pie and it has to get split. And as a fiscal hawk, I'm always playing the devil's advocate, like where is this going to land us? And you have faith in the system. We do what's right now and we'll figure it out because this work, this commitment has to be made. So thank you for that.
Other questions, comments? Let's vote. Seven votes, miss. Okay. Item 6.02, Alternative Method of Instruction Plan for 2025-26. Board members received information on this item through email last week. To recap, the plan we are being provided to approve includes the new requirements from DESI with no other changes from the prior school year AMI plan. The recommended action is that the board approve the AMI plan as presented. Do I have a motion? Board member Provance, second? Board member Smart? Questions, comments? Board member Mahad McConney?
I have a little something to say about everything. These are, this is an important subject. And so if I'm reading this correctly, so this is a new law, therefore we have to have this new plan, right? And for those of us who've been in the system a while, had kids before, we used to have a calendar, just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. We used to have a calendar, and Brett's not here, that would say this is, could be the last day of school. The earliest last day of school, which is very confusing. And that was always the buffer for what happens if we have inclement weather or whatever. But now because of this, we now have, this is the last day of school, right? Am I?
Correct, that's correct.
Am I going there, okay?
Yes.
I'm just, to make sure that we have the historical perspective. And then the question I have, and I just want to make sure that there's a safeguard on this. When I was reading, I'm really comfortable for grades nine through 12 because there's, it's being done digitally, that there's individual teachers for each class, they monitor the, I mean, this is not new. But for K8, this is new. And there's, let me just find it. It says that homeroom or designated, so this is K8, designated teachers collect physical packets, so that would be for PK through eight, and record whether each student submitted completed work. This information is then used by the school office staff to enter AMI attendance. And I just want to, you know, that this isn't just completed work, that there is some safeguard to this truly an attempt at getting the work done, right? You can't just go and answer hello for every question, hey, it's completed and it's turned in. That we have a, because that's how it reads, that it's completed. In high school, you know, it has to be completed with some effort. And if you don't put effort, you're going to get an F, right? If you, if you just do nothing and you put some periods down. But for this, it's, there's a little, another layer, there's a safeguard to, against that, right? I mean, we have first and second graders who could be completing this potentially, like just drawing pictures for everything.
You're right, but so, I don't know about your question about a safeguard. So let me make, let me, let me say it like this. You're right, there are some students that have to complete the work by themselves. Our teachers will make the instructional decision as it relates to the work they receive back, like they do for any work that is received of what is considered passed and failed. So the teachers make that decision.
Okay.
Based on the return packet.
The return packet, because, you know, maybe I was the first grader who would complete it, but my brother, mm-mm.
But didn't he try? Sometimes you have to do an A for effort.
Yes, okay. But it's, so I guess my, but you said what I wanted to hear, which was the teacher. Because when I read it, I wasn't sure if it was the teacher or if it was school office staff. It's recorded.
Well, school office staff records the, so what happens is for the packets to come back, they go back to the teacher, the teacher makes a decision as it relates to scoring it.
Okay, so the teacher.
All this has to input the actual attendance.
But the teacher takes the packet and makes a determination whether this was in good faith.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure it was in a matter of, it got turned in. Thank you.
And I would just say that it wasn't necessarily new. My kids, my kids did AMI packets this past year during inclement weather and then that was.
That was the first year we did it.
Yeah, yes, yes.
But now we have a policy, we do have a policy.
And that was the case. So they completed the work and then teachers received it back and said, yes, you did the work. So now you are counted as in attendance for that AMI day.
Other questions, comments? Let's vote. It passes seven zero. Item 7.01, the Legislative Session Summary. Jason Zankus will provide an update to the board on the recent legislative session. And I'm thinking it was kind of wild.
Yeah. Good evening, Dr. Lathan, members of the board. Again, my name is Jason Zankus for the new members that I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. But it's been my pleasure to represent the district for several years now. And I'm pleased to announce that since we last saw each other in Jeff City, the legislature has concluded its work on not one, but two legislative sessions. And in doing so, provided a number of benefits to SBS directly, as well as to public schools throughout the state. And in doing so, also did the least amount of harm, I think, that was potentially possible given just some of the really nefarious proposals that were pending before the General Assembly. So I'll start with the general, with the regular legislative session. Through work with the Senate Appropriations Committee and most notably their chairman, Senator Huff, we were successful in adding an additional $300 million to the foundation formula to reflect the state adequacy target changes, allowing for the full funding of the foundation formula as well as the transportation categorical. There were 2,620 bills that were filed last year, of which only 56 actually made their way to the governor's desk, which is a success rate of about 2%. In saying that it was a fairly low production session, it's actually significantly more productive than the last three or four sessions that we've seen in the General Assembly. I could go through all the bills that even touch even tangentially upon public education, but I'd like to just highlight one of them, which was the big omnibus education bill, Senate Bill 68. While that bill had a number of things that were originally drafted as mandates, unfunded mandates on public schools, we were successful in working with the legislature to provide that those requirements would only go into effect subject to state appropriation. So it's not going to create an additional draw on local educational resources and will only go into effect if the appropriations committees decide and the governor signs off on funding those requirements. In addition, the bill started out as a single-subject bill dealing with the regulation of cell phones in school settings. Through the process, 35 other provisions were added to it, thus creating the omnibus. But the cellphone restrictions would go into effect during the 25-26 school year and require each district to create a policy that at a minimum prohibits the use or display of communication devices from the beginning of school to the end of school. of communication devices from the beginning of school to the end of school. There are very limited exceptions for individuals with special educational needs, situations where an emergency would require that that student actually use their device. But aside from that, it is a straight ban from bell to bell. In addition to that, there were a number of school safety measures that were added in. Again, all of those requirements, whether it's lock outdoors or bleeding control kits, cardiac arrest training and equipment, those are all again subject to appropriation. In addition, there was a fix to the 169-day calendar issue, which actually, we worked with the Commissioner of Education. When this bill passed, it gave her a greater level of comfort in granting SBS's waiver based on the inclement weather that you all suffered right towards the end of the school year. In addition, they extended the substitute teacher work after retirement provision, an additional five years. And then, again, 35 provisions, I could go on and on about it. But there were a number of things that did not pass that we were very successful in opposing, including charter school expansion, efforts to lessen or limit school administrator salaries, and also open enrollment, which ended up dying on the Senate floor after Senator Huff offered an amendment that would require full funding of the school foundation formula, the transportation categorical, and minimum teacher pay in order for open enrollment to be viable or allowed in any given school year. I fully anticipate that open enrollment and many of those other proposals will come back again next session, but fortunately, we were able to stop them from making their way to the governor's desk. Moving real quickly to the special session, as I'm sure you're all very well aware, the governor called a special session to deal with stadium financing for renovations and relocation, as well as storm relief. In order to actually garner enough votes in the Senate, there was, in addition, the governor actually expanded the call to allow for limited property tax reform. And in doing so, each senator had an opportunity to decide whether or not their county would be required to place on a ballot a proposal to either freeze property tax liabilities at 0%, 5%, or not at all. Here in Green County, Senator Huff chose not at all, and so your property tax revenues, your necessary funding for school operations will remain unharmed. I would note that the Speaker of the House has already indicated that he plans to put together a task force over the interim in the hopes of having recommendations and then hoping to persuade the governor to call a special session concurrent with the veto session in September to try to come back and revisit these property tax reforms. My fear is that it's not going to be, there's a lot of operational problems with the way this was drafted. I think it was drafted sometime after midnight on the day that the bill was finally passed. It was modeled after Senate Bill 190, which a number of counties have taken advantage of to provide a freezing for property tax liabilities for senior citizens. But based on the way that it's drafted, it's very unclear exactly how that's going to be implemented from one county to the next. And knowing that the Speaker of the House is from Jackson County and his county was specifically exempted, my fear is that there's going to be an attempt to add more counties into either the 5% or the 0% thresholds. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments?
This might not be in the scope of legislative session, but I know there's a task force that's looking at the foundation formula funding. Any?
They had an organizational.
Have a crystal ball yet?
No, unfortunately. And quite frankly, when you're looking at the foundation formula, property taxes play such a key role in that, and not knowing what the legislature is going to do as it relates to that necessary revenue stream, I think makes it even more onerous a task for this task force to really figure out an efficient, effective way to fund schools through property taxes. So they've had an organizational meeting, there haven't been any real indications as to what direction they're going. I do know that there's a number of members from agricultural industry groups that are very fearful that, you know, trying to, I guess, equalize assessments might require actually adding, or increasing assessed valuations as it relates to agricultural properties. And so I think they've got a real task on their hands and it'll be interesting to see as they work through the process, what they arrive at.
One more follow-up question, not on that topic, but on the topic of the property tax. So you mentioned there, you think there may be another kind of revisit to that conversation.
I think even if it doesn't happen in a concurrent special session during veto, there will be a number of proposals. There's always probably, you know, a couple hundred proposals dealing specifically with property tax rates, assessments, collections. It's going to happen sooner or later.
Other questions, comments? Board Member Mahan McConney?
I had a couple, two questions, and Kara Stasiel may have to help me out on this. And I know I've asked everybody this, so I'm going to just ask you because, because you have a crystal ball, right?
I left it in the car, I'm sorry.
So the 300 million in fully funding transportation, that's not to the proposed new SAT scores, it's the current years, the 24, 25 SAT level. There's another, is it 50 million to move us to where we want to be?
I, my understanding was the 300 would get us to be whole.
To be whole, okay. Do you think that there's money for that?
I, so I've had numerous conversations with the State Budget Director, Dan Hogg, and I think there's a real concern on his part as to not just whether or not there's enough money this year, but going forward, whether it's something that's going to be continually, continually available. The governor hasn't taken his action on the appropriations bills yet. I actually have a meeting with the State Budget Director tomorrow to try to glean some kind of sense for whether or not that money's going to stay in the budget or be subject to a line item veto.
Okay. And by line item veto, you mean only the proposed difference?
Yes.
We're going to definitely, you feel, we, we're very conservative in Springfield, and Kara and Dr. Lathan have done a really good job making sure that we are budgeting conservatively. But for sure, it's, we're going to get what we've always gotten, or the elevated level that we just got this year.
That was, that was included in the governor's original recommendations. I don't see him.
Okay.
Vetoing portion of his own recommendations.
But I'd heard that there was a lot of positive from, from other school boards, that yes, we're going to get the new SAT, but you've got a feeling that that may not happen. Okay.
I don't want to create false hope. I think that, based on the fact that the governor got his $50 million for ESAs, he got his way with the stadium funding. I think it would be very difficult for him to come back and say, no, we can't do more for schools.
No, we can't? Is that what you just said?
Yeah. I think it's a difficult position for him to take.
So, so he will, you feel? So you're back, so you're not negative Nancy, you're going to positive? Like, you were kind of equivocating.
Well, I'm still equivocating, but I've known the State Budget Director for 25 years now, and he is, he's keeping this about as close to the vest as anything I've ever seen.
Okay. So it's really going to come down to whether the dollars are there?
Correct.
Is what you think? Not whether the intent is there?
Right.
Okay. The intent is there, but.
Certainly on the, on the part of the legislature.
And the governor?
Well, it wasn't in the governor's original recommendations for the 300 million.
Okay. All right, well, I'll let that go for now. Okay, so then, when you talked about Senate Bill 68, you said that these provisions can only go into effect if there's, they're subject to appropriations. And when you, for example, the locked doors and all this.
Correct.
But that's year to year.
Well, these, these would be, I think probably a lot of this would be done in one given.
One given, okay. So, but then before, so you said, subject to funding, and then before you went into the school safety measures and all the other stuff, you went to the heart of the bill, which is Senate Bill 68, was the cellphones, minimum bell-to-bell no cell.
Correct.
Now, that's not subject to funding, or are there, okay, so that one's just straight across the line, so that's a sure thing?
That's, all it, all it does is require that the school districts create a policy that at a minimum prohibits from bell to bell.
Okay, but potentially, they're, you know, funding could help with implementation, but that's not one of the ones.
That is not.
I mean, more money's always better. But this is not one that's tied to funding.
Correct.
So it's, okay, that's what I want to ask.
And the policy could be as simple as the student has to have it in their bag at all times, they just can't, you know, use it or display it. And that's what the statutory language specifically requires.
Other questions, comments? I have, I had this sinking feeling when you started your presentation with, well, we have a budget that's the least amount of possible harm.
Yes.
I wrote that down, I thought, this is not good.
Not just the budget, but just legislatively in general, it was the least amount of harm that could have been caused, I believe. If, if you, any of you have looked at the tracking documents that I send on a weekly basis, there were some bills that could create some real issues for public education and specifically SBS.
And regarding the task force to look at the foundation formula, if my memory serves, Governor Quixote put some parameters on that in terms of, it couldn't go above, is it last year's? Did I misunderstand something? Did he give them a parameter of it couldn't go over a certain amount, or it couldn't go over a certain percentage?
I don't recall there being a limitation on the amount of funding.
Okay, well, good. All right. Anything else? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Drive safely.
Thank you.
Next, Item 8.01, the 2023 Bond Project Updates, Change Orders and Agreements. Mr. Sean Dilday will present information on the 2023 Bond Project Change Orders and Agreements.
Good evening. In your board packets this evening is the change order agreements for this meeting. I want to point out a couple items. Olson Engineering, our civil engineering firm, we've got two line items for the Bingham and Bissett projects. So I just want to point that out because those two projects are moving forward very quickly. So total dollar amount on change order agreements is $478,128.
The recommended action is that the board approves the expenditures as presented. Do I have a motion? Board Member Thomas Tate, a second?
Second.
Board Member Huff, questions, comments? Ms. Raymond, it passes with seven votes. Item 8.02, Construction Manager at Risk, Executive Director of Operations, Mr. Sean Dilday.
Thank you. The first construction manager at risk is for the Bissett project. Through the interviewing process and the RFQ, RFP process, the team narrowed it down to Crossland's construction for the Bissett project. My recommendation as we move forward with Crossland as our CMR on that particular
Do I have a, the recommended action is that the board approve the Crossland construction proposal as presented for CMR Bissett Elementary School. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Well, I wrote it, I read it out of order, thank you. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions or comments?
May I?
Of course.
Hi. So this looks just a little different from the past ones, so there's the pre-construction, and that's all the things. And then there's a pre-construction fee, that's easy to understand. And then there's construction administration. But then on the bottom, it has general conditions, estimated 14 months, and then there's construction management at risk fee, 2.15%. Can you tell me what the difference between those two categories? So which one's the cost of construction administration? Is that the second line?
I'm looking Travis to assist me with making sure we get your answer correct.
Okay, while he's doing that, can, can we, like, when this is all done, we keep updating it, I think this will be the last update.
Um.
Was this already in it?
Yes, this was already.
This was already in there? And the old, the engineering's also in there, okay. And then, while he's still looking that up, my second question was, you have warranty, and I wasn't, I think, I think I understand what warranty is, but is there, and Mr. Byrne had talked about this in the past, and I thought we were going to do it, but I'm not really sure where we landed, was a time factor component in place for damages, be it compensatory or punitive, but some sort of a, and I remember saying, well, that's in place, but that wasn't with this, that was a different project. And I didn't know if we're doing it with this project as well.
So is the question on the warranty itself?
Well, I didn't know if the warranty was on the product or on the fact that we're going to get this done in 14 months, because that's what we said we're going to get done.
So the warranty piece of that is the warranty of all items, there's a one-year warranty time period on the building.
Oh, so that's on the actual.
So that's on the actual building, yes.
Is there some sort of guarantee on if you, I assume it says 14 months, it's a 14-month project?
Yes, so.
What happens if it's not done in 14 months? Is there that component?
So are you asking about liquidated damages?
Yes.
So we would look at liquidated damages into the contract, yes.
So that is in the contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to explain the fees, the pre-construction fee is the work that the team will do leading up to construction starting, so it's a set fee. You then have your general conditions of 14 months. Contractors will give us a monthly amount that they expect to, that's their cost to do work, that's their cost to mobilize, have superintendents, project managers.
But that's their oversight, that's what.
That's their overhead that they have. And then the fee, the construction management fee of 2.15% is based off of what the actual construction contract will be, that's essentially their profit that they're going to make off of this particular project. So the general conditions and the fee represent the overhead and profit during construction that we know upfront that we are being charged.
So construction management at risk fee, so they're taking on risk, and this is their, this is their fee, but then the 14 months general conditions, that's also a management fee, right? It's just a straight fee and not a percent, because if it was a percent, is it goes up or down?
We will, we will get a monthly bill, whatever that 344,400 divided by 14 is, that's what we will be given each month as far as a bill goes.
That's a management. Now, whether that's their real fee or their profit, that's not on us.
Correct.
I understand what you're saying, but that's also, are you saying that this is what it costs them to oversee it? This is.
That is what.
There's contractors and their.
Correct. All, when we go through this process, every contractor that gets to the interview table, part of that process is to submit their fees, and they all submit, here are, here is what our cost is to do this work. And that, that is weighted 40% of the decision-making in that process.
These are the subcontractors that then report to the contractors?
No, these are, this is the general contractor cost. And so then subcontractors at bid day will then all submit their bids for each of the different individual trades, and then that's what makes up that total GMP, that guaranteed maximum price that Sean will bring back to you once all of the design and bidding is completed.
Okay, let me just ask this one other way. So because there are construction management at risk, and they have this flat fee for managing it, and then there's, they are taking on the onus of, this is what we said it's going to cost you, and this is what it's going to cost you. And that's what we're paying, we're paying to guarantee that cost price.
Right, these are, these are Crossland's, these are Crossland's fees that we are committing to. The rest of the cost will be what all of the subcontractor costs add up to be, to make the GMP. When you look at this, this is 700,000 roughly of a total of what's going to be, I mean, being, or this is, yeah, this is Bissett, so it's roughly $20 million project.
Okay.
So the rest of that cost is made up of all of the subcontractor.
No, I get that. But as part of this, they are held to that 20 million, I know I'm just throwing that number.
Right.
I know it's specific. But that's included in this, that they are going to cover that. That's their parameters, and they're staying in it, and that's why we're paying them this fee.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Do I have a motion? Oh, I already. Do I have a motion? Oh, I already did it. Thank you. Let's vote. It's getting hot in here. Yep, thank you. And Ms. Raymond, it passes with seven votes. Thank you. Well, Mr. Dilday, you're still there.
Me again.
You'll provide information on the construction manager at risk.
So same thing. This particular one is for the Bingham project. Bingham will, through the evaluation, we selected Navaholtz Construction. Recommendation is to move forward with Navaholtz for the Bingham project.
The recommended action is that the board approve the Navaholtz Construction Proposal as presented for CMR Bingham Elementary School.
So moved.
Okay. Board Member Kincaid moved, and Board Member Thomas Tate, second. Questions? Comments?
I have another question. And I don't know, I'm just going to look at Dr. Shaw and you at the same time. So the cost for Biset was 20 million roughly, and for Bingham, new build is, is it 25, 30? Do you recall? 27. But then when I look at the preconstruction fee, it's a lot more. It's, so obviously it's not a straight ratio, right? And that's just the way the cards fell?
The, yeah, and I was involved in the process when Shawn's team interviewed these groups, but the $6,500 on the previous one for preconstruction is the lowest pre-con fee I've ever seen. That one's, that really surprised me.
Really low, right? Okay.
Extremely low, yeah.
Generally speaking, it's 25 to $30,000.
Okay. And then, okay, that makes sense. And then, I'm just putting it out there. I just want to understand this. So this bid is 2% of construction, and the other one was 2.15. And I know that they seem like really small differences, but when it's a lot of money, it's not so small. And is that just because nobody else bid 2%?
Right. And it just gets very competitive. And these, this is weighted on 40% cost, 60% qualifications. So there's an evaluation schedule that we have to go through to evaluate each one of these firms for each project.
Oh, 40% cost, 60%?
Qualifications.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Let's vote. And it passes with seven votes. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Friday's the last day of seated explore classes. To celebrate the focus on reading and math, of course Clifford the Big Red Dog visited schools, is visiting schools this week. I joined him today at Harrison Elementary School. Students who had perfect attendance during the explore received a free book. Student learning will continue through June 30th, from June 30th through July 25th for students who enrolled in virtual explore classes. Our back-to-school bash is at one month away. It's on Saturday, July 26th, which means the end of summer will be here soon. We're welcoming our families to come out to the Expo Center and join us. If you'd like to volunteer, please go to our district website. We welcome volunteers to support us at this outstanding event. Speaking of getting ready for school, I would like to thank James River Church for supporting Cherokee Middle School this past Saturday. They painted, conducted landscaping work, but they truly beautified the Cherokee campus. And so I want to thank them for their continued support of Springfield Public Schools. I will tell you, they were in Springfield and Joplin, and, you know, I'm like, okay, you do have a campus in Joplin, but you can always, we can always take a second, second campus in Springfield. So I'll be pushing on that for next year. But once again, thank you to James River Church for supporting our families. Board members, that concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. Questions? Comments? Comments from the board? Board Member Provance.
I wanted to, oops. Talk a little bit about the indoor facilities. It was in the newspaper. We kind of talked about it. I, I want to start off by saying, one of the biggest divides between a comfortable lifestyle and those with daily struggles is opportunity and experiences. And the more diverse the experience and the more opportunities that are provided allows that student to grow. Our world requires training, education, opportunities to succeed and to safely fail. Our students need to be challenged. They need to understand that you have to sacrifice to win, that you need teamwork to achieve great things, and they need to understand that success is greater than a medal, because success can become an attitude, and winning can become a habit. If you're going to break the cycle of poverty, we need to accomplish that through the experiences and the opportunities that SPS can provide. Some people say I'm halfway crazy over SP Sports and Activity Programs, and I'll proudly answer, yes, I am. Dr. Scott and his staff, they do an incredible job with this very valuable program. I want to see our facilities catch up. They need to catch up with the, the growth of the Springfield Public Schools. JFK Stadium was built when there were only five high school football teams. No soccer teams, no girls' sports. Our junior highs had three sports for boys, and they just played a city schedule. That's the only true track stadium that we have in the city of Springfield. I mean, it hasn't, it's been updated, and I want to, I thank you for that. But we need to catch up before we can move forward. Our world is, it's moving faster than we can comfortably keep up with. There are more students participating in the activities program than in the athletic programs. Now, many of those activities do evolve around the athletic programs. I mean, your band, your drum line, flags, cheerleaders, dance groups that perform at athletic events. But there are team sports, individual sports, recreational sports, wellness activities. There's rehab opportunities. There, there are so many activities that the Springfield Public Schools offer. They're just for fun. They're social. They're competitive. They reduce stress. They teach social skills. They teach fair play. These are activities that can mimic individual and team sports at the same time. If we offer these valuable activities and opportunities, then we need to provide a place for these kids to practice. They need to learn to practice. They need to learn to work hard. They need to try and fail, and then they need to try again. There is so much limited time to practice in typical school day, right? You can come in a little bit before school. You can come in late at night, but you have so many activities. The, the cafeterias turn into multi-activity programs after school, and you've got four activities going in one gym. You ought to see everyone stop and drop when the coach with the loudest whistle blows that whistle. You know, one of the, one of the things about the increased number of activity programs and allowing these kids to, to get in work, we need more physical activity in our lives. I mean, we need it at every age, but we definitely need to recognize that it's beneficial at any time. We have the world with so many jobs out there, but we don't always have our students physically fit enough to work on that job. So I, I can't say enough about providing an indoor practice facility that can be tied directly to the school campus, that can be part of the curriculum, that can be part of the activities program. I don't want to limit it to, I'm not bashing football coaches because I know that they want to stand up for their programs, but I can't think of five football coaches that could share. So I, I want to be positive. I want to be quiet because I surpassed my time. You know, glasses didn't work. I just didn't see it.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Board Member Mahon McConney?
I have a couple comments. One is, Susan, I really appreciate everything that you just said. You'll, I'll say you're the yin to my yang, or however way that goes. I'm a board member that hasn't always appreciated the value of athletics in the public sector. I appreciate it in the, it's a cultural difference, right? In other countries, it's not part of the school day. It's something that happens after school. For all the things you said and so much more, right? I mean, there are so many studies now, because I'm, I look at, I like looking at studies. And it looks at leaders, specifically CEOs, and this, I'm sure you've all read that. When you look at them, especially in women, they were 99% of the time played on a team sport. And today, now than ever, it's so much more than setting them up for future success in terms of failing, because learning how to deal with failures is the most important thing when it comes to succeeding, and learning those skills and making those connections. But today, more than ever, we are dealing with a physical and mental health crisis in our children. So it's doubly important to be physically active. So thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I love all our high schools. They're all great, and they're all unique. But Central holds a special place in my heart, and I always follow what's happening at Central. So the ranking, the 2025 rankings for the best high schools in Missouri is out, and Central High School has made it to the list. And regionally, it's only Central and Nixa High. But if I could just take 30 seconds to read it out. Hold on, I got to find Central. I was just there. So it's 30 top schools, and we're number 10. So it's, Springfield Central High School continues to maintain its reputation for academic excellence in southwest Missouri. Established in 1972, the school serves approximately 800 students in grades nine through 12. The school offers a comprehensive advanced placement program with 18 AP courses. Good lord, that's on top of IB. Allowing students to earn college credit while still in high school, its student-to-teacher ratio of 17 to 1 enables more personalized instruction and support. And for the record, we have an open enrollment system in SPS, and I don't know of anyone who's ever wanted to transfer to Central that was not able to. I think it's important to point out that there's always room there. Springfield Central boasts strong STEM initiatives, including a robotics team that has qualified for state competitions three consecutive years. And I know the other high schools also, like Kickapoo, don't, let's not get our feathers ruffled, but I'm just going to keep reading. The school's graduation rate stands at 92%, but here's the kicker, with 78% of graduates, graduates pursuing higher education. It's really high. Not that you need to have a higher education degree to be successful. Just making sure I've got that. Athletic programs, now this is new for Central, are equally impressive with state championships and basketball and track within the last five years. And a lot of people don't know this, but they have a fantastic performing arts. The school's performing arts department showcases student talent through four, hold on. I'm almost there. I just lost it. Something happened. Well, they have four major productions, and what they don't talk about is what an incredible film department they have and, right? I mean, it's, okay. College preparation remains a priority with dedicated counselors helping students. So I'll stop right there. Okay, thank you.
What's a bulldog? Always a bulldog. Yeah. Any other comments from board?
I had a couple brief comments. We had, some of us had the opportunity, we all had the opportunity, some of us were able to attend the MSBA Summer Summit down in Branson this, this past week. Just always appreciate the opportunity to learn more. And Susan, to your point, I don't know if you were in this meeting with me or not. There were probably about 60 different board members from all across the state, and the presenter, kind of as an icebreaker, said, I want you to turn to your neighbor and talk about if you were in extracurricular activity in high school, what, what was it and what did you enjoy about it? And after we spoke with our neighbor for a few minutes, she said, I don't know what most of you turned to your neighbor and saw, and said, but I could see it all on your face. I could see the enjoyment that even years and years and years later that you drew back on, on those extracurricular activities, whether it be athletics or true activities, and the benefit that it provides to our students, not only teamwork, but also perseverance and resilience, and there's studies that there's increased academic achievement. And so, yes, thank you for, for what you commented, and it, yeah, yeah. And then, to echo what some of my other board members said earlier this evening, thank you again for the small budget meetings, the, the multiple small budget meetings. Somebody asked me, now that it's summer, does the board, you know, take a little break? And I said, no, actually, June is one of our most busiest months because we've got to pass the budget, but I am looking forward to a break in July. So, but thank you again, Dr. Lathan, to, to you and your team for the extensive amount of time that you spent with us on that.
Other comments?
I just have a couple of brief comments. I want to say thank you too for taking the time, and to Cara and others that were in those meetings. They were really very helpful, and I appreciate them so much. So thank you for, for doing that. And I also wanted to just kind of give out a short shout or a, or shout out to Stephen Hall and his folks for bringing us every month, those sweet students to say the pledge. It's always so fun to see them and their families and how proud they are that they're here to say the pledge. And also the honoring excellence. It reminds us of why we're here. We're here for the students and the staff and the educators, kind of centers me, and I really appreciate the work that you put into that. So thank you very much.
Other comments?
I just have a couple of things to say. Dr. Lathan mentioned the back-to-school bash. That really is a lot of fun and very rewarding. So if anyone wants to come and volunteer, there will be plenty to do. But it, it, it really meets a need in our community, and it's nice to be able to provide that. I also participated in some of the ambassador meetings this year, and we honored them this evening. That really is a great program, and I love the fact that it was expanded out to staff as well as within the community, because the meetings I was in and was able to attend, people were really appreciating. people were really appreciating and learning a lot about some of the best things that we have to offer. Because we are the district of choice, as I hear you say frequently. I think, Coach Provance, you're going to start taking over as the board historian. I'm just fine with that. Good for you. As you think back on how Parkview was built and what we had at that time, that's always a good reminder. And with our legislative update, and we've said this before, but I just, it just can't be said enough. And that's, as a public, we have to start paying attention to what's going on in Jefferson City and letting our voices be heard. Because we really are at a pivotal time, I think, right now in public education, so. Thank you to everyone that helped with collective bargaining as we looked at all of the minutes that were spent, the hours, the days. Those, those agreements came to with a lot of collaboration and a lot of compromise, I'm sure, to some extent. But it really, it, it, we, they were able to turn out a good product, and that's a good thing. I will say that the National Speech and Debate Tournament was last week up in Des Moines. And if I understand correctly, every one of our high schools had representation at the National Speech and Debate Tournament, which is huge in terms of academic achievement and just a wonderful honor, so. I think that's it. And thank you all very much. Those are my comments.
Our next meeting will be a board combined study session and regular meeting on August 19th, 2025. And that concludes our meeting. We have a recommended action that the board meeting adjourns. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Board member Thomas Tate moved. Board member Huff seconded. Please, no discussion. Okay. And let's vote. Okay, yeah, no, I've done it. Well, we, it did pass 7-0. Coach Provance had shut her computer down, so. All right, so it passes with seven. Meetings adjourned at 7:03. Thank you all.